November 6th, please stand for our invocation led by William Harkins, Executive Director of Public Works City of Mobile and Deacon of Saint Ignatius Catholic Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Please bow your heads in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Dear Lord, we gathered here today, your sons and daughters, for a wonderful event. But before we engage in that, we want to recognize you as our Creator and the Sustainer of all. We sometimes take that for granted, Lord, but we so much appreciate all you've done for us. We thank you for the great blessings in this city, the great community, and our leadership. And dear Lord, we ask special blessings today on our leaders, the mayor and the council, also on their families and the entire community. Dear Lord, we follow you in all things. We know that the best leader is that servant leader that Jesus Christ portrayed for us and taught us. And we ask that these leaders have the wisdom of the Holy Spirit and the courage to follow it in all things as they pursue your will. In the name of Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undying, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll begin our swearing-in ceremony, beginning with Mayor William S. Stimson.
You would place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, William S. Stimson.
I, William S. Stimson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
I will faithfully and honestly.
I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I am eligible for the office of Mayor.
That I am eligible for the office of Mayor.
Of the City of Mobile.
Of the City of Mobile.
And will execute the duties.
And will execute the duties.
Of same.
Of same.
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you very much.[247.29][247.29](APPLAUSE).
And that's just five of the twelve.
District One Councilmember Frederick Richardson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Place your hand on the Bible, raise your right hand.
There you go.
And repeat after me. I, Frederick D. Richardson, Jr.
I, Frederick D. Richardson, Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Of which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I am eligible.
That I am eligible.
For the office of City Council, District One.
For the office of the City Council, District One.
Of the City of Mobile.
Of the City of Mobile.
And will execute the duties of same.
And will execute the duties of same.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[372.87][372.87](APPLAUSE).
Council District Two, Councilmember Levon Mansy.
I'm going to ask my lovely mother to come down. Let's give her a big round of applause.
If you'll place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me, sir. I, Levon Charles Mansy.
I, Levon Charles Mansy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties.
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I am eligible for the office.
That I am eligible for the office.
Of City Council, District Two.
Of City Council, District Two.
Of the City of Mobile.
Of the City of Mobile.
And will execute the duties of same.
And will execute the duties of same.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Council District Three, CJ Small.
I ask my mother and my second mother, which is my sister, to come on down and hold the Bible for us. Know that. I, CJ Small, do solemnly swear.
I, CJ Small, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
As long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties.
Of the office upon which I am about to enter.
Of the office upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I am eligible for the office of the City Council, District Three.
That I am eligible for the office of the City Council, District Three.
Of the City of Mobile.
Of the City of Mobile.
And I will execute the duties.
And I will execute the duties.
Of same according to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Of same according to the best of my knowledge and my abilities.
Congratulations.
Council District Four, John Williams.
Put your hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, John Williams.
I, John Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And honestly discharge the duties.
And honestly discharge the duties.
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I am eligible for the office.
I'm eligible for the office.
Of City Council, District Four.
City Council, District Four.
Of the City of Mobile.
Of the City of Mobile.
And will execute the duties of same.
And will execute the duties of same.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to my best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations.
Council District Five, Joel Daves.
Raise your right hand. I, Joel Daves.
I, Joel Daves.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I am eligible for the office of City Council, District Five.
That I'm eligible for the office of City Council, District Five.
Of the City of Mobile.
Of the City of Mobile.
And will execute the duties of same.
And will execute the duties of same.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Council District Six, Bess Rich.
I, Bess Rich.
I, Bess Rich.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
Of Alabama.
Of Alabama.
So long as I.
So long as I.
Continue a citizen.
Continue a citizen.
Thereof.
Thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I am.
I am.
About to enter.
About to enter.
To the best.
To the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I am eligible.
That I am eligible.
For the office.
For the office.
Of City Council, District Six.
Of City Council, District Six.
Of the City of Mobile.
Of the City of Mobile.
And will execute.
And will execute.
The duties.
The duties.
Of same.
Of same.
According to.
According to.
The best.
The best.
Of my knowledge.
My knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
Congratulations.
Council District Seven, Gina Gregory.
I, Gina Gregory.
I, Gina Gregory.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Alabama.
And the State of Alabama.
As long as I continue a citizen thereof.
As long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I'm eligible for the office of City Council, District Seven.
That I am eligible for the office of City Council, District Seven.
Of the City of Mobile.
Of the City of Mobile.
And will execute the duties of same.
And will execute the duties of the office of same.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability. Thank you, Judge.
Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations.
At this time, the council shall appoint a temporary chair.
Please say, how did he hear you?
At this time, the council shall appoint a temporary chair.
I'd like to appoint the clerk of the City of Mobile.
Second.
I.
Roll call. Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Mansy.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Communications from the mayor.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Grateful to see everybody here. I'm excited about the next four years. We have an opportunity, the council and the mayor, to build upon the great things that have happened over these last few years. The future has never been brighter, and again, I'm very excited. I'm honored to be your mayor, and I promise that I will serve all the citizens of the City of Mobile. Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 02-043.
So moved.
Move for the suspension of the rules.
Move to waive the rules to take this up at this meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
02-043, ordinance establishing rules and procedure for the mayor council form of government for the City of Mobile, Alabama.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution's being introduced for the first time, 03729A through 03730.
What is it? We don't have a, we don't have a.
Oh, I'm sorry, emailed it to you all. Okay.
Move to waive the rules for immediate.
These are the rules to, I mean, these are the resolutions to appoint, to declare a president, a vice president, and appoint an attorney.
Okay.
So this move, I need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration.
So moved.
Resolution 03729A through 03730. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
03729A, resolution declaring the election of President of the Mobile City Council.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Temporary Chair Lady, placing the name of Fred Richardson in nomination for President of the City Council.
Second. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion placing the name of Gina Gregory in for President of the Mobile City Council.
First, we need to take this motion. We have to take this motion first. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. The motion to, the motion for Frederick Richardson as President of the council is denied for lack of majority vote, supermajority vote, excuse me. There's a motion on the floor to nominating Frederick Richardson as council president, and it is dead as there is no, it is denied as there is no supermajority vote. It takes five votes for this resolution.
Madam President.
There's only four.
Madam President, I didn't hear, I didn't hear but two noes. Okay. Point on the Presider. Madam Presider, since 1985, we have elected the president with four votes. This is a departure from tradition. I can't but one speak, Madam President.
Excuse me.
So five rules. There's not a motion on the floor and no discussion. The rest of the chair calls for the discussion.
Madam President, you recognize me and not Mr. Williams. I would like to continue what I was saying.
Mr. Richardson.
Thank you very much. Historically, since 1985, the thirty-two years, for the last thirty-two years, and I've been on this council since 1997, we've never called for a supermajority before. And I am challenging moving on for another nomination. Let the record show, put this in the record, that I am challenging this because we have never gone down this path before, and this is a departure from tradition. And I just want that in the record. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Richardson, according to the Zogby Act, any resolution or act of this council takes five votes, and this is a resolution.
Madam President, the resolution for the budget, how many votes does it cost for?
A majority.
Four. So what you said to me is not true.
I defer to our council attorney.
If I might have the floor, that's okay? Are you okay with that, John?
Not the chair.
Thank you. The opinion that has been expressed about requiring supermajority came to the former council for the last term, and maybe we should move to have the appointment of the attorney for Mobile City Council up on the agenda if my colleagues will agree, or we should move on at this point and look at trying to get a vice president of the Mobile City Council.
Madam Chair, I'd like to place the name of Gina Gregory in nomination for President of the City Council.
The name of Gina Gregory has been placed on the floor as a motion for president. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Opposed?
opposed.
Denied for lack of supermajority vote?
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Can we table this and go to the vice president if possible?
We're through.
We'll need to, I'll need a motion.
President, I recommend we move on with vice president.
Is there an opportunity for the people to speak? No. Or organizing. Resolution 03729B, resolution declaring the election of Vice President of the Mobile City Council.
I'm nominated, Councilman Levon C. Mansy.
I'll second.
The nomination of Levon Mansy has been placed on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Levon Mansy is the Vice President of the Mobile City Council. At this time, I will turn the gavel over to Mr. Mansy to run the meeting.
No. Yes, yes, by the rules, which we adopted. It says in the absence of the president, vice president.
That's a deal.
I'd like to ask the attorney, the city attorney, a question. Is there currently sitting a president of the City Council?
Use the microphone.
There's been a lot of things, the Supreme Court opinions, the Attorney General opinions, and it says that an officer continues to serve in the position until a successor has been chosen, and that in this instance, Ms. Gregory continues to serve as president. The Zogby Act also says that the vice president serves in the absence of the president. If a vacancy occurs, then the council shall elect a successor. It says if a vacancy shall occur in the office of the president, the council shall elect a successor. It doesn't say that the vice president immediately succeeds to the duties of president, which bolsters my opinion that until a successor is chosen, Ms. Gregory continues to serve as president.
Madam President, until we, until we vote on an attorney, we have, we have no attorney. So that opinion is null and void. Let's move on.
Madam Chair. I'm going to make a motion that until we elect a president, that our vice president is the chair of our meetings.
Let's take a motion.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No. Majority.
Let's move on.
Resolution 03730, appoint attorney for Mobile City Council.
Now considering the appointment of a council attorney. Are there any nominations?
I nominate James Rossler.
Second.
There's been a motion and second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would ask the gentleman if he accepts the nomination.
It's always been an honor to represent each and every one of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? And we'll vote all those in favor who said nomination, let me know by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Astaining.
Okay, I need to know, I need to do a roll call vote because I didn't get that.
We haven't done a roll call so far. Let's go.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, ma'am.
How do you vote?
No.
Mr. Williams?
In favor.
Mr. Small?
Astaining.
Mr. Mansy?
Absailing.
Ms. Rich, I mean, Mr. Daves.
Aye.
Ms. Rich?
No.
Ms. Gregory?
Aye.
Madam Presider, so, Mr. Presider?
It is the opinion of the Presider that absent. It is the opinion of the Presider that absent having a sufficient number of votes, that particular motion fails. Do I hear another name and nomination?
I nominate Wanda Cochran.
Second.
There's probably a motion and second that Wanda Cochran would serve as Council Attorney for 2017.
Vice President?
Yes.
I think we need to ask if Ms. Wanda Cochran's available and where she is at the position.
I think there's an order. Ms. Cochran? Is there any discussion on the nomination?
Yes. If I might have the floor, thank you. Ms. Cochran, who just stood up, is very versed in municipal law. As a matter of fact, she trains municipal lawyers in order to become versed in municipal law. She's also, has experience with our city government. She first got employed, I believe, in 1990 in our city, and I've personally worked with her. I'd never directed her because she worked in other departments, but I've admired her tenacity and her ability to put her good education to work on behalf of the citizens of Mobile, and I hope that she will be affirmed.
Any further discussion?
Madam, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to have to admit that I've completely off guard here, and we've always been a council that even when we disagree, as I have with the nomination of my friend Fred Richardson, really Fred's been in my house, and we have been together more than me and any other council member. And I have called him and we have talked, we have talked face to face about the issue that has just come before us. In that, I was pleased that we were able to look at each other civilly and talk about the issue, even though we seriously disagree, and we have on several issues. And then now, it's just unlike this council to be surprised. And so I would hope that we are, that we're able, as we go forward and moving our own districts in the city through this next four years, that we're, that this is not a precursor to how we're going to do business. It simply won't work. I'm not saying that Ms. Cochran is not, in fact, I think she's very capable, but at this very moment, I have not talked to her, and I would have done that had I known that she was going to be nominated. So I'm not in the position at this point to offer a positive or approving vote, and I would move to table.
I would second that.
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
That's right.
There's an appropriate motion that's been seconded on the floor, and I'm going, we're going to need to handle the motion that's on the floor, and at this point, we're having discussion.
The Roberts Rules of Order, the question is, is it on the table? So we can address it, and when it fails, and it probably will, we'll move forward with the original motion.
Let's, in deference to that, let's, let's hear the motion to table. It's been, pardon?
I think I have a second on the floor.
It's been probably a motion and second on the table. You will need five votes for the table to be successful.
No, ma'am, no, sir. A motion's on the floor. I'll call for the motion. You got to go to the motion.
You have to take the motion that's on the floor.
I take the motion.
You have to take the tabled motion.
Mr. Chair, if you would please?
Yes, ma'am.
I would agree, let's go ahead and take the motion to hire Ms. Cochran and continue discussion, and then if that fails, we can go to Mr. Williams' motion to table after that.
Let's, let's go.
And while we are under discussion, Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with Mr. Williams, the idea to hire a different attorney, first I've heard of it. We all know Ms. Cochran, we've worked with her before, I certainly have, appreciate the experience that she has. However, Jim Rossler has been our attorney for many, many years, and if you're talking about an expert in municipal law, he is the man. He has worked with every one of us, every day, and I've never seen anyone work as hard as he does with all of us. You may not agree with his opinions, but he is the attorney, and we don't shop opinions because we don't like what one says. I don't believe it is a wise idea for us to switch like that in midterm, especially, as Mr. Williams noted, coming out of the blue, when we don't even know that you're interested in finding another attorney. You know, this council, I always brag about, as we all brag about, how well we have gelled, how we have come together to resolve issues in the past. And again, if this is the way we're starting, it doesn't prove to be a very good organizing meeting to get started. So, Mr. Chair, if it's time, let's call the question and vote.
Mr. Chair, yes.
Councilman Davis asked, we recognize, next, we're going to continue in discussion.
Right.
Councilman Davis, followed by Councilman Richardson, and then Councilman Small.
I have a question and then a statement. Madam Clerk, is it correct that, do we follow Roberts Rules of Order at these meetings?
Yes.
Okay. And what does Roberts Rules of Order provide with respect to a motion to table?
Rapidly overruled.
I didn't ask Councilman Richardson, I asked the Clerk.
I certainly would have to pull that in order to give you the correct answer to that, but is my, based on my knowledge of Roberts Rules of Order, if there's a standing motion, you have to take that motion first.
Before the motion to table?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, secondly, with respect to the motion, I have the highest amount of respect for Ms. Cochran. She's involved, she's been involved in municipal law for a long time. She always speaks with grace, courage, and precision. Nevertheless, I also have a high amount of respect for Mr. Rossler. Mr. Rossler has done an excellent job for the council. My relations with him over the last four years have been very good. I've found him to be impartial in terms of the opinions he gives. I don't think he has a particular bent one way or the other, and I agree with Councilwoman Gregory that, that what we ought to be looking for in a council attorney is someone who has the capability and the intellect and the discipline to, to work for the council. It's seven individuals, they have different, they have seven different opinions all the time, but we shouldn't, we shouldn't dismiss attorneys, council attorneys, because they come up with an opinion we don't like. That's not a reason to do it. So I will be opposing this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just don't believe I'm hearing what I heard. I'm a little surprised at that. Let me share with you all that last year, four years ago, 2013, my name was in nomination for the President of the Council. Mind you, I have been on this council, I've been Vice President for twelve years. I've been on this council for more than twenty years, talking about longevity, who's been here? I got three votes. Ms. Gregory got four votes. Who you think became the President? Ms. Gregory. This time, you know how many votes I got? Four. You think they're going to seat me? Then switch the rules. And now they're talking about switching the rules on somebody else when you just switched it on me? Rules were switched on me. Since 1987, it took four votes. Mind you, at this point in time, we are trying to pick an attorney, serious business, but the voting of the President is just part of the organization. All we're trying to do, this is an organization meeting, it's to pick who's going to run our meeting. So you think that is far more important than picking a, an attorney? It takes four votes to pick an attorney. All we're trying to do is pick somebody, it's only about the council. We're not conducting city business. We're trying to pick somebody to run our meetings. You're going to come back and say you need five votes for that? And you need four votes for the budget? You need four votes for the council? Something is wrong.
I'm going to ask that the audience, again, the council is in session to organize, let's keep some decorum, if you don't mind. I know everyone has their various positions. I understand that I have mine, but Councilman Richardson, have you concluded your mark?
Yes.
Councilman Small?
Thank you, Brother Chair. Four years ago, we sat in these same seats at ten o'clock, but an hour before, we went into executive session to discuss the Vice President, the President, and the City Attorney, excuse me, the Council Attorney. Through emails throughout the last couple of days, you know, two of my colleagues, three of my colleagues, two of my colleagues had said that they could not make executive session. So for them to say that just caught them by surprise, it wasn't nobody's fault, you know, by council and executive session, all this could have been behind closed doors, but yet they said they could not make the executive session. Executive session could have been held on yesterday, it could have been held at seven o'clock this morning, it could have been held at nine forty-five this morning. It's just not fair that four years ago, that in, during the executive sessions, that Councilwoman Gregory had received four votes, and Councilman Richardson received three. If we knew about this five and this deal that we had to have five votes, it would have failed last year. So last year, we had a whole new President because Reggie Copeland did not run again, so therefore, this council did not have a previous President because Reggie Copeland was no longer serving on the Board. So what if last year that Gregory, Councilwoman Gregory, would only have four votes? Where we would have been last year? Where we would have been four years ago? You know, now, this Councilman Richardson turned, and he has four votes. Now surprisingly, we have to have five votes. That's just not right. Well, good for the goose, is all goose is all good for the gamble. This is a council business. You know, we also stated that the Zagabi Act states that we have to have five votes. Well, this is council business. We're just looking for a leader, and the majority, in our states, again, the majority should rule as far as the council rules states. And I am challenging the opinion that we have received by our former attorney, because I just don't see where it says supermajority, only I read it's majority. At the day, there was a vote for Councilman Richardson for the three, and it looked like we have another vote for another attorney. So therefore, from my understanding that, you know, there's a motion to table this, I guess take five votes to table it. If it fails, we have to go with a Council Attorney. And for what I read through the law, that it takes four votes for a Council Attorney. So I ask that our Chairman to go ahead, further this meeting, by going ahead and voting on this attorney. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Williams?
I just want to make it, and I, if I could say this as short as I can, I'll be thankful. We couldn't do an executive session this morning. You have to be in a meeting, number one. Number two, you have to make an announcement, a public announcement, that you're going to go into executive session. And so, the reason I did not attend this morning's meeting that was traditional through the years, is because I questioned the legality of being able to go into that meeting, and I knew that it would be challenged, and I thought for the, just for the, for the good of the council, none of us needed to be in a meeting that was not declared appropriately an executive session.
If I could?
No, just one, just one second.
One other time, please.
And what I was trying to say earlier is that unlike some of the motion from Ms. Cochran, and I know she's a great attorney, I've taken her advice on a lot of issues, and we've had a lot of great discussion, even this last Friday evening downtown, is that when I had an issue that I needed to discuss with Fred, I went straight to Fred. We spoke face to face, and I've done that with every single member of this council. And I just ask that as we go forward, that we continue the frank discussions that we have always had and has made us a good council. As Fred says, this is a bold council. Never had any doubt about this council, and I hope that we can continue with that, that way of doing business.
Amen.
And I, also, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I questioned the four votes on the Council Attorney as well. I don't think that there is anything except the budget that requires more, that requires four but, four votes. Everything else, all business and all powers, resolutions and ordinances and action of the, or business of the city requires five votes. It doesn't say supermajority, it says five votes.
I call for the vote.
Madam City Clerk, I just want to make certain that we have some clarity. Isn't there language in Zagabi that reads that we can secure a Council Attorney by a majority vote?
Mr. Manzi, if, Mr. Vice President, if you don't mind, I would like to first start with 11 dash forty-four C dash twenty-eight.
Yes, ma'am.
Which states that the council shall hold regular public weekly meetings, no resolution by law or ordinance, the affirmative vote of at least five members of the councils shall be sufficient for the passage of any resolution by law, ordinance, or the transaction of any business of any sort by the said council or the exercise of any powers conferred upon it by the terms of this chapter or bylaw, or which may hereafter be conferred upon. This is a resolution, these are resolutions, so with this chapter, it states that it takes five votes. Now, for Council Attorney. Whereupon, by a majority of those present and voting, the council from time to time when it deems necessary and reasonable, is authorized to obtain legal counsel outside the city merit system to advise and defend them in their respective capacities as council members and in the pursuit of the operation of government. This is 11 dash forty-four C dash thirty-eight. Majority in this case, based on the court decision in 2003, is four votes.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
Well, any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Rich?
Thank you. I'm all about transparency, and until we took the oath of office, our terms actually expired, and meeting together as a group of newly elected officials, although all of us are repeat officials, we have historically gone and had time together to hash out the leadership of the council and the choice of attorney, and it was always done on four votes. That was unofficial, and then to come down and vote as a council after having our oath of office. But I did research also how many it takes to hire an attorney, and it's not required to be supermajority according to court case, I think it was a court case, right? So, you know, we've, we've come to closure on our Vice President, we haven't come to closure on our President, and I have enjoyed my tenure, all my tenures on the council. And so, we all have our jobs to do, and we all do good jobs representing the people that put us individually by district, because we're only as strong as the seven links in this chain that is up here. So we have to work together, and I'm confident we will, and I'd like to call for the question of the Attorney.
Again, any further commentary? Mr. Davis?
You mentioned a court case that confirmed that it only took four votes. What is that court case?
I can go upstairs and get, I did not bring it downstairs.
Does Mr. Rossler concur with your opinion that it only takes four votes? You do?
Yes.
Okay, good.
It is, yeah, it's Christopher George versus- It is, yeah, it's, um, it's, uh, Christopher George versus the, um, City of Mobile.
A part City of Mobile?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Well, let's move on to, for all those. We're gonna take the motion. All those in favor of the name and nomination, let me know by the sound of aye. Uh, we have four ayes, two noes, and one abstention. Ms. Cochran is appointed as council attorney.
(applause)
But again, I, now you're awake. What I had mentioned was four years ago, when we came down to this official meeting, and this is the only official meeting that we have, I received a unanimous vote. And I appreciate the support that I have had from my colleagues for these four years, working with the administration, working together with all of my colleagues. We have resolved any number of very difficult issues. I'm very proud of the work that we have done, the successes that we have brought to the table, and I hope that going forward, whoever is elected our next president will have that same opportunity and same respect that I received. It's been a tough road at times. We had a new mayor, we had new council members, we had to learn each other, we had to figure things out, and how to communicate, and how to work together, and I think we've done it. The city has progressed tremendously, and I'm very proud of what we have been able to achieve. So, again, just thank you. I know we have an opportunity tonight to make speeches, so I don't want to take too much time now, but just as going forward, I did want to clarify that. And, again, congratulations to at least our one elected new officer, Mr. Manzi.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to further clarify the matter. In closed sessions last year, Councilmember Gregory received four votes. Councilman Williams said, "Let's not go out there and show that we are divided. Can't we get everybody, since she's going to be in with four votes, can we all unite together and go out there and give her a unanimous vote?" That, and Fred Richardson, who received three votes, turned around and voted.
Councilman Richardson, I'm going to just make this your time to speak, if you don't mind.
It is.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. I just want to make that clear, she had four votes. And Councilman Williams said, "Let's not go out there with those people to show that this council is divided with just four votes. Can't we all go out there and make a unanimous vote for them?" She had four back there, she had four here, we made it unanimous. So, you all would know that we would be working together. I would just like, I'll take this moment to thank all of the citizens in District One for voting for me. They have never not supported me, and I've never not had a landslide. But I want, I want to send a message today to those citizens in District One who did not vote for me. I want them to know that if you rain, I will spring. That I'll, I'll give you the same deference as I will those who voted for me. I represent every living soul in District One, whether you voted for me or didn't vote for me. And I'd like to say this to Mayor Stimson, it would appear in some parts of this city that I'm an antagonist, that I am opposed to Mayor Stimson. So, what I did is to drive the ball home, so we're all to understand, I had my secretary over the last year to go and find out how many times I voted no on an agenda item sponsored by Mayor Stimson, and it was two in the whole year. And I'll challenge you to find another council member to beat my record. Now, you ain't going to stop me from talking, I support you. But I am the voice crying in the wilderness, and I will not cease until justice run down like water and righteousness as a mighty stream.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, Mrs. Rich.
Thank you very much. I too would like to thank the District Six residents that supported me, and I look forward to the next four years of serving them, advocating for them, and working them through this system so that their neighborhoods and businesses can be the strongest they can be. I will have a greater speech, a longer speech, at our ceremonial inauguration this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the time that I asked the council to come down unanimous was on the subject of vice president, because that was the only division that, that, that there was. So, just for what it's worth, because half the people listening don't believe me, and the other half do, so I'm not changing that by a bunch of words. I will say that I'm eternally grateful. I have been blessed over and over. And I am, I told somebody the other day, I'm, my, I don't know if it's patience or tolerance, but it's, but it is, it's where and then. There's a, it's a long time to be on a council and answer to all the folks and, and do the best job you can do. And, and as Mr. Richardson said, in his reference to "you ring, I'll spring," there hadn't been a single phone call or a single email that I haven't responded to, that I am aware of. And I try to do that within 24 hours. And I ask the same thing that Mr. Richardson asked, that even the folks that did not support me, including my opponent, when, when the time comes and the city's not meeting its mark, I am ready, willing, able, and have the energy to, for another four years, be the voice of District Four and any citizen that's not being listened to, if they feel that that is the case, or if it's actual, to represent them here at City Hall. And again, I'm, I'm honored to be here in this capacity. I do consider Mr. Richardson, Mr. Davis, Ms. Gregory, Ms. Rich, Mr. Manzi, Mr. Small, and I will say especially Mr. Small. We have had a very unique relationship in the last six years, and, and I, I look forward, almost seems like a little longer, but five years. He was, he was brought in at midterm. He's brought in midterm, so those dates are a little hard for me to recall. But a very special relationship between Mr. Small and I, and, and I look forward to working with all of them as we go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Thank you. I also would like to offer my congratulations to Reverend Manzi for his election as vice president of the city council. And I would like to thank all of those residents of District Five who supported my reelection. And as with the other council members who have spoken, whether you voted for me or not, I'm your servant. I'm happy to serve anytime you give me a call. I'll do everything I can to help you out with any problems you may have regardless of where you, where you live in the district. I have a great deal of admiration and respect for Councilman Richardson. I hope I call him a friend. The challenge he is, challenges he has had during his lifetime and the way he has surmounted those challenges is something we all ought to admire and look towards as an example. But I think, I wanted to say a few words about why I supported Councilwoman Gregory as president of the city council. First, I believe it's generally recognized that City of Mobile has made tremendous progress over the last four years. Our financial position has been restored, our debt reduced, and for the first time in many years, we're repaving roads, improving drainage, building sidewalks, and improving our parks. Businesses are relocating to Mobile, and unemployment has plummeted. As leader of the city council, Ms. Gregory has played an active part in achieving these results. Second, we had a municipal election on August 22nd, which acted as a referendum on the city's leadership. The mayor and five city council members were returned with overwhelming margins of victory, and the other two council members had no opposition. I take this as a statement by the people of Mobile that they approve of the city's leadership during the last quidrenium and don't want any changes. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Finally, having worked with Ms. Gregory now for four years, I believe she has the patience, tact, and demeanor necessary for a good city council president. It's not always easy to chair our meetings, nor is it easy to build consensus within a legislative body without political parties for discipline. Working with her fellow members on the council and with the mayor and his administration, Ms. Gregory has been vital to our ability to move the city forward. These are the reasons I supported her. Where we will go from here, I don't know. We're in uncharted waters. I will continue to work with my colleagues on the city council to try to find a way out of, out of the situation in which we are currently find ourselves. We have come, this council has come together over the last four years in a collegial way. Divisions are always going to occur, disagreements are always going to occur. Over time, we have had some serious issues we've overcome over time, and I feel confident that we will overcome this one also. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Small?
Thank you, Vice President Manzi, to comment on some things that Councilmember Williams has stated. There is a special love between us, but for the record, I love his wife much, much, much better. They're like oil and vinegar. I don't see how she put up with him at all. Every time I look at her, I would say, "You have my condolences." Even though I'm, I am a funeral director, I know what condolences is. But not only that, Councilmember Williams and I have a special bond, there's a special bond within all seven of us, from District One through all the way to District Seven. This is not the first time that we bump heads. Last year, four years ago, we pretty much was in the same boat behind closed doors. And the only fault that I see that, you know, tradition was broken last four years, where Councilmember Gregory, at the time, had Williams, Davis, herself, and Rich vote to be president. And Vice President Richardson, at the time, had myself, Manzi, himself, and Councilmember Davis. And we came up, we overcame it, and we're going to overcome this. I'd like to say congratulations to our new attorney, Ms. Cochrane. Matter of fact, just saying one more time for everyone can pretty much see you. And I'm going to ask Ms. Cochrane that the first business is to really find some type of resolution for, for no council in a future we ever experience this again, what we have experienced this morning.[1342.01][1342.01][applause] And I ask Ms. Cochrane to jump on this as soon as possible, before we can nail this in the bud. Because, again, you do things by tradition, but it's different when you have things in black and white. And sometimes tradition don't hold up, because this council's going to change, it's not going to look like this forever. But once it's in black and white and it's the law, it's the law. Again, I'd like to say congratulations to our vice president, Reverend Manzi. I was very jealous of him when he won his seat four years ago, because I used to brag about I was the youngest person that ever was elected to the Mobile City Council. Now, we got some preacher up here taking my fame away. But the thing about it is that, believe it or not, we love each other. Most time, we all vote together. Most time, the most thing that we vote different is when it doing, dealing with money. But other than that, there is love among this council. And I can't wait to the next four years to work with each and every one of my colleagues for to move this city, excuse me, and the mayor and his administration, to move the city for, because the thing about it is, we have great things coming and better things in District Three. Thank you.
I first want to say thank you to my mother and to my father, my siblings, who will be with us this evening. I'm appreciative of the opportunity that the citizens of District Two have allowed me the privilege of representing you again on our city council. And I'm thankful that I did not have to brave the hot summer days and hot summer climate, for you sent me back unopposed. And I'm appreciative, and I'm going to double my efforts in making certain that our district is represented with integrity, that issues are addressed fairly, and that all see benefits from their tax dollars. I'm appreciative of the opportunity to provide some level of leadership to our city council. Make no stake, make, make no mistake about it, despite what might have occurred here today, this is a bold council. This is a strong council, and we are going to make it pass this stalemate. We're going to come out on the other side of this stronger. I don't believe that there's any animosity in the heart of anyone who serves. We all have one overarching goal, which is to make this city, along with serving with our mayor, the best city that it can be. I want to take time to acknowledge our former president for the work that she did in leading this council over the last 48 months. It certainly is no small task. I want to acknowledge our former vice president for the ways that he assisted and the ways that he provided leadership over the last 12 years in this same position. And I want to join Councilman Small in tasking our new council attorney with, as soon as possible, rendering to this council a legal way forward, answering the question relative to our council presidency. As long as we don't have that response, I'll do the best I can to provide steady leadership to the degree that I'm allowed by the members of this council. We look forward to tonight at 6:00, where we will have the ceremonial swearing in. This is democracy, ladies and gentlemen, and, and that's the beauty of where we live, where we can disagree, where votes can be lopsided, where opinions can be changed, and we can do it agreeably, for the most part. And so, again, thank you all for this opportunity. I look forward to working with all of my colleagues, working with Mayor Stimson and his administration, to move the great City of Mobile to even higher heights. With all remarks concluded, do I hear Madam City Clerk?
I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to thank our former council attorney, Jim Rosler, for all of the service and support that he has provided over the years. He has truly been a rock to me in times that I have needed him, and I know also to you all, and I do appreciate it. I look forward to working with our new council attorney, Wanda Cochrane.
And if I, I am remiss, because I should have done that. We want to say to Mr. Jim Rosler, thank you on behalf of this council for your years of service. Thank you for your accessibility. We also want to thank you for all the energy that you have put into serving as our council attorney. We welcome Ms. Cochrane. You're going to get indoctrinated with a great issue, and we hope that you hit the ground running, because we're going to need that guidance yesterday. Madam City Clerk, any other agendas?
The only other announcement that I'd like to make is to invite everyone to the ceremonial swearing in this evening at the Arthur R. Outlaw Convention Center at 6:00 P.M.
Do I hear?
There is a reception following.
Do I hear a motion?
Some of them.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
It's been properly motioned. Second, all those in favor, let me know by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. You're part in working with.[1718.01][1718.01][applause] Do I just, thank you. I just leave this here?